At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, at this time, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Darnell, would you like to lead us, one of our veterans?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to approval of minutes for the last meeting. Moved by Mr. Johnson to have a second. Second by Ms. Wheeler. All in favor? Aye. Need a motion for the approval of the agenda tonight.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Wheeler to have a second. Second by Ms. Mullen. All in favor? Aye. This time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Philip Brown for his comments.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, community. I did notice it snowed a little bit this afternoon, which we all got excited about. And I got a little nervous about, like, how much is it gonna snow? Thinking about school, but we will have school tomorrow. And it'll be a great day. You tried hard, Ms. Todd. I do have a few things I do wanna share with the Board and share with the community. We have 27 employees inside of our district that are veterans. And really thank them for their service. We have a number of schools that will be participating in Veterans Day ceremonies over the next few days. So excited that our school district is celebrating those men and women who've sacrificed so much for our country. Some other exciting news that we have inside of our organization. We have five schools that were named literacy and math leaders by the Georgia Department of Education on Friday. Congratulations Gum Springs Elementary and Legacy Knoll for being recognized in both categories. West Jackson Elementary was named a literacy leader in the state. Maysville Elementary and West Jackson Middle School were named math leaders by the Georgia Department of Education. So congratulations to those students, teachers, leaders, and parents as well. Few other things that happened over the weekend. East Jackson High School's cross-country teams, the boys finished as the state runner-up and girls finished with their best place ever as third place. So congratulations to the boys and girls cross-country teams. At East, we started swimming. We've already had student athletes qualify for state, which is really exciting. We had our Empower Raiders this weekend, who finished fifth in the state out of 70 teams in their first-ever appearance in state competition in Milledgeville. So congratulations to our Raiders. East Jackson High School and Jackson County High School this past weekend qualified for state competition cheerleading squads. East Jackson competes on Friday at 10:00 a.m. in Macon, and Jackson County competes on Saturday at 3:00 p.m. And if you're late by two minutes on those, you miss the whole competition. So if you're going, get there on time. Big Friday night. We have a home playoff game. Jackson County High School hosts Glen Academy on Friday after completing their first-ever region championship season. East Jackson travels to Columbia High School in Decatur for a Friday night, 7:30 matchup. Also, we have LEGO League Robotics going on. Teams held their practices against each other on Saturday, and competition begins after Thanksgiving break. So lots of great things going on. Nine days to Thanksgiving break. We're all excited about everything going on, and I'm glad it stopped snowing. Dr. Blackburn, Empower, let's hear some updates.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you, Board, for allowing us every year to spotlight some of the amazing things that our teachers and students are doing in our buildings. We appreciate the time in front of the Board and the community. Last year, we talked about our three pillars: project-based learning, literacy, and school culture. This year, we'd like to go a little bit deeper into our project-based learning. And as a principal, I could not be more thrilled and excited with what our teacher-led and teacher-and-student-driven PBL that we completed last year was. Mr. Darnell is going to be telling you all about that as we are celebrating Veterans Day. I would also like to recognize Ms. Katie Lee's. Her husband deployed for 202 days and came home on Halloween. So I want to thank the families of our service members as well. And of course, we have Mr. Darnell. Oh, there's Katie Lee's. She's back here. And then, of course, we have Mr. Darnell, who is a retired captain from the U.S. Army. So please welcome Mr. Darnell and Ms. Lee's.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Superintendent Brown, and to all those in attendance. My name is Josh Darnell. I'm the lead instructor for the Government and Public Administration Pathway at Empower College and Career Center. And my colleagues here with me tonight are Katie Lee's, Maggie Brown, and Lisa Coffin, collectively the heart and soul of our fantastic healthcare pathway, which is beloved by so many students and the envy of all healthcare pathways everywhere. My very first day on the job at Empower was the same day I learned for the first time about project-based learning and how this problem-focused, student-centric approach to the classroom was going to be one of the pillars supporting our educational philosophy at EC3. That day, I casually mentioned to Dr. Blackburn that it might be cool to do a school-wide PBL built around a simulated disaster response scenario and the various roles that members of the professional community play in such a crisis. And then I wisely never really brought it up again. Fast forward about two years, and Dr. Blackburn stops me in the hall to say, "I think it's time to do that thing you wanted to do." I said, "What thing?" And she said, "The first-ever school-wide PBL involving all the students and pathways at Empower." And at that moment, I was the proverbial dog that caught the car. Fortunately, I had some very skilled, very hard-working colleagues who were willing to rescue me from my own idea. And in a short while, we had teachers and students from almost all of our pathways, learning, training, and preparing to rescue the fictional town of Sweetwater, Georgia from a very imaginary F-4 tornado. The video we prepared for tonight features photos and videos taken by students, capturing other students performing the tasks learned in their pathways, carrying out response plans that they themselves researched and created with minimal guidance and assistance from their teachers and real-time assessment from members of the Jackson County first responder and medical caregiver communities. In this video, you will hear the voices of just a few of the students who were positively impacted by this unique learning experience. When disaster strikes the sleepy community of Sweetwater, Georgia, the dedicated public servants of Empower C3 spring into action, saving lives and learning valuable lessons along the way.
My name is Tristan, and I was in the EMR class during the March Disaster Experience. I feel like I learned a lot about myself and how to respond more quickly and accurately in high-stress situations. I know I still have a lot to learn in the role of health care, but this experience made me want to keep learning and improving even more.
With people from the fire department, the EMTs, and other entities, this has shown me a hands-on view of what our pathway leads up to and what our future careers may look like. This experience has shown me and others how to practice and perform what we've learned in a hands-on way to give us more experience and confidence in any situations that may happen in the future.
My experience working in the Command Center taught me the importance of preparation and teamwork. We coordinated rescue efforts, communicated with the hospitals to ensure that their needs were met, and reunited families separated by the disaster. All in all, it was a great learning experience for those of us interested in health care and public services.
With the immediate crisis under control, our elected leaders and crisis response team faced the biting questions of intrepid student reporters at our emergency press conference. Their coverage was, of course, fair and balanced. In the end, the students of Empower learned the true value of project-based learning, building teams, building skills, and bridging the gap between the classroom and the world beyond the schoolhouse doors. The beauty of project-based learning is that culminating public-facing events like this are just one day out of a learning experience that spans for weeks or months and often continues on long after the simulation is through. We are proud to be able to offer authentic experiences like this to all of our students at Empower, and we are forever grateful for the support from our Board, our superintendent, our district staff, and our community that makes these experiences possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had an opportunity to visit on that day and just to see the interaction, the teamwork, the partnerships, and all of the different entities working together to pull that off. So thank you for the time and energy that you took to plan those lessons for our students. All right, Ms. Gillespie, Jackson County High School, November Rotary Student and Teacher of the Month.
If I could have Bartu Tunkton and Stephen Bowles come up here with me. Good evening, Dr. Brown and Board. We thank you so much, as usual, for allowing us to recognize our Rotary Student of the Month. This is Mr. Bartu Tunkton. Bartu Tunkton is an incredibly kind and considerate young scholar, and he is hands-down an amazing alto saxophone, right? Alto saxophone player. And he is with us every Friday night, out there performing for our marching band as well. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Bartu. He is currently enrolled in IB Mathematics Applications and Interpretations. He is in Personal Finance and Economics. He is also in Mastery Band, and he is in IB Psychology next semester. I think he's got an AP Macro Self-Study Course you're doing, some dual enrollment classes, and some additional IB classes as well. Some activities he's involved in is marching band. He's actually one of two band captains for us. This year, his senior year, he created a brand-new club at Jackson County High School. It is the Language Club. He is the founder and the president, and they had an amazing booth at our Fall Festival as well. He is in the French Honor Society, and he is in our National Honor Society as well. He's had a tremendous amount of awards and honors. He is an amazing band participant. He was a member of the Georgia 14th District Honor Band his ninth, 10th, and 11th grade year, all for the alto saxophone. He was also the JCHS Band Most Outstanding Junior and Sophomore, which is pretty cool. He's in the top five of his class. He earned the Georgia Certificate of Merit recipient, and those are reserved for juniors that are in the top 5% to 10% of their class. He has a tremendous amount of college board recognitions. He earned the National Rural and Small Town Recognition Award, the National Recognition Program in general for his high scores. And he has been awarded the AP Scholar with Distinction, which is one of the highest AP Scholar awards that you can earn. He's already taken six AP exams. I know he has more AP exams in his future this spring with some IB exams as well. But one of the most amazing honors that I know of that Bartu has earned is from the Georgia Student Technology Competition, where he created a mobile app. He was the regional winner, but he was also a state finalist. And he created an app that was called Quick Places. And what it is, is wherever you go, you can put in things like museums, parks, schools, anything that you find interesting, and it will just tell you where they are in that moment. And I think that's pretty awesome, and he was a state finalist for that. And we are incredibly proud of Bartu. And I'm gonna let him tell you a little bit about his future plans and why he selected Mr. Bowles as his most influential teacher.
I just wanted to say thank you to the superintendent and the Board for having me here. And as for my future plans, I plan to major in computer science and get a bachelor's degree. And I plan to continue playing music and just making a difference in the communities around me. As for why I chose Mr. Bowles right here, I had him for AP Calculus AB last semester, or last year. And he was always there just to, like, help. And he was like an amazing person to lean on when, like, even if it was just a small calculus problem, or... He helps with SAT and the exam. And I plan to go to his review sessions for the Calculus BC exam, which I plan to take in the spring as well. And overall, he's just been such a help in everything in high school. And actually, he actually wrote a couple of letters of recommendation for my college application process. So I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Bowles. And that's why I've chosen him for Most Influential Teacher. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Board. I am excited to present our Extra Mile Award this evening. As you know, we did our inaugural award last month. And this award is truly special because colleagues nominate each other for doing something above and beyond the call of duty that supports students or other colleagues. And this evening, our recipient is Ms. Hannah Friar. She is the Administrative Assistant at Gum Springs Elementary. And she was nominated by Ms. Allison Crawford, her colleague there. And this is what Ms. Crawford had to say. Hannah has gone incredibly above and beyond working to make our new sensory garden and playground area happen at Gum Springs. She has worked for months to obtain funding, including corporate and local sponsors, and ordered every single piece of equipment. She has overseen every step of the process, and it has truly been a labor of love. Hannah's efforts will benefit every single student at Gum Springs, but especially our students with significant sensory and behavioral needs. The sensory playground will be a safe space for our students each day, and I can't wait to see them enjoying this area every day that they are at school. So if you will welcome Ms. Hannah Friar. And we are so thankful for our partners in education. Georgia's Own Credit Union has provided a $100 gift card for Ms. Friar to use, not on the sensory playground, but on yourself.
Good evening, Board. I wanna echo what you said to start the Veterans Day being tomorrow. We have a new person cleaning our building at night at our district office, and I saw his Veterans tag on his car. And I wanna give Cliff a shout-out, 16 years in the U.S. Navy. So it was great to have him onboard and get to talk to him a little bit tonight for this meeting. Tonight, I'm here to recognize two educators who have gone above and beyond and are being recognized for their achievements and input at the state level, once again representing the Jackson County school system at a high level. So please, Dr. Abby Ginn and Dr. Stephanie Westhaver, please make your way up here. So first, we'll start with Dr. Ginn, South Jackson Elementary School. She was selected to serve on the Georgia Department of Education's Teacher Fellowship Cohort, Policy Fellowship Cohort for the 2025-26 school year. She attended the kickoff meeting in October and will serve on the cohort that provides a unique professional learning opportunity designed to introduce classroom teachers to public education policy and policymaking. So it's a great opportunity to get a great wealth of professional development and how things are done at the state level that impact us here at the local level. So congratulations for that great honor. We are very proud of you. Next is Dr. Stephanie Westhaver of West Jackson Elementary School, well-known in the science education field. If you've tracked her accomplishments that we've released the last couple of years. And she was recently recognized as the Georgia Ag and the Classroom Teacher of the Year by Georgia Farm Bureau. This award recognizes educators who excel at integrating agriculture into their non-vocational classrooms. So congratulations to you as well, Dr. Westhaver. Congratulations. That concludes my comments. Mr. Chair?
Okay, at this time, on the agenda, we have an item for a public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Board, please step to the microphone. Don't everyone rush at once. Okay, there's no one. We'll move on to item seven, Consent Agenda Items. Board need a motion to approve the four items listed, five items, excuse me, on the consent agenda. Moved by Ms. Wheeler and second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor? Aye. None opposed? This time, we do have a need for executive session for personnel. Need a motion to go to executive session. Moved by Ms. Mullen. Do I have a second? I will second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, need a motion to come back from executive session? Motion by Ms. Mullins, second by Mr. Johnson, all in favor. Okay, board, we have personnel actions recommended by the superintendent, need a motion to approve those. Move by Ms. Mullins to have a second. Second by Mr. Johnson, all in favor. Ah.